Hello everyone, my name is Kurzar and welcome back to Vintage Story Desert Life. Episode 179. This video was originally streamed live on YouTube on June 8, 2025. I hope you enjoy the video. Now, isn't there, there's some way of actually getting this out of here like quickly? Is it like I have to like crouch or shift and then right click the, the block? I don't recall. Apparently, holding shift doesn't change the speed at which you turn the stone into gravel, unfortunately. It flowers on occasion and can get that tall. Oh, okay. Yeah, when it bolts. Supposed to be smallest ground cover plant. Yeah. Wait, how can you lock the output of the crusher box? Um, I forget. I think it's a... It's a shift click. It's, or sorry, it's a crouch click, whatever your crotch is stuck to. Wait. No, you can't, you can't hold a steel hammer in both hands. Nice try, Greg. Grab two hammers, double the speed. Folgers is working, get huge in the UK. Okay. As I recall, it's just sort of like... Hey, there we go. Oops, I'm putting it back in apparently. Boop. We still have more stone. Oh, because I had stone in my inventory. I knew that. It is the dream of every ground cover plant to be a bush instead, as mere escape DC. Alright. Hey, there we are. Alright. Cool, we're restocking our conglomerate. It's good to see. And we're gonna need, I think we need like, I think each wing of the hallway needs like eight stacks of conglomerate gravel, I think it was, or something, something crazy high. Because these are, let's take a peek, it's been a while. I think they're two blocks wide, I don't recall. Yeah, they're two blocks wide. So this is like, actually, I think it's eight stacks per one of these paths, I think. It is like crazy, crazy amounts of conglomerate. Gravel! Just stop moving, Kurzar. There we go. Sitting here holding down the forward button. It's a bad idea. Alright, so... Now, there, there isn't a way to go directly from this to gravel, is there? There's no like, I can't just whack this with a hammer. You're kidding me? Okay. Not gravel, but I'll take it rather than trying to like break it down from a from full stones after blowing through a rough cut chisel. So Ryuga of Hazen 151 is talking about Oak Tree's recipe for the red meat cabbage and red fruit stew. Zero to stuffed and half a bowl. That is, that is the dream right there. The core mod is great. Yes. Um, I wouldn't use this for like a, like a, a guide series because it's a little too... Okay, it's, it's way too good for, for a guide series. Like it's, it's so much, it's so different from the vanilla experience that like it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense. Uh, but for a modded series like this, it is the dream. Guess I could probably end that poll, couldn't I? Well, in the poll after this guy. Well, that thought throws the stones out at different velocities based on how high it is. Fountain versus trickle. Smitheron with the guide series three, let's go. Yeah, I am excited for it. It'll happen after the series, but uh, yeah, I'm already excited for it. Okay, I'm gonna end this poll here real quick. End poll. Done. The core mod respects the player's time a lot more than vanilla. Yeah. Like it's, it's not overpowered necessarily, but the problem is that in a, in a guide series, while, while the core mod is likely to stick around for a very not time, if, if not forever, um, for a guide series, I want it to be as vanilla as possible because a lot of new players, you know, players who are, who are new to the game and even the genre, they might not look to modding right away. Um, from what I've gathered, it's kind of common, it's, it's pretty uncommon for someone to go straight to mods, um, for a game. So I'd rather have the, the base game covered with the, the guide series and then mods for, you know, other series. Like this one. How many stone did that use up? Okay. I think... Let's see. There we go. So it's four stacks in there. In you go. And then I think with this will be, oh wait, we have gravel. This is all sandstone gravel, never mind. Excitement debated. How many people play vanilla for how long before they start to mod up? I have no idea. But by that time, you're familiar enough with this, with the game that you probably don't need a guide. Oh, it added... It put my gravel back in. Why would you do this to me? Alright. Can I put you in with the gravel still in there or not? We're gonna find out. I can. Okay, we'll just do it this way. That's fine. Hey there, Sidmo. You're actually here for the livestream. I hope you are, because we're not doing much else today. Alright, there we go. Leave a penny, take a penny. There we go. Okay, don't, don't click on anymore. Don't do it. Alright, hammer is done for now. And, you know, I don't really trust the game to not be like, hey, it's been calm all night. Now it's 4:00 AM. It's time for some pain. So I think what we'll do is... Do I have any? I have some sandstone. Ashlar. Formerly known as stone brick. Um, let's hang around here. We're gonna need to, um... Yeah, we need to chip out some more bricks. Do that real quick. Ah, now do I have mortar? Do I have enough mortar? Where's my mortar at? Oh, no, I think we're, I think we're out of mortar. Hmm, that's not great. Hmm. Okay. Well... As one gives a mouse a cookie. Have to get some mortar here soon. Like, immediately. Look at the, ah, let's get the mortar before the bricks, actually. Is there's any in here? There is not. Um, we need limestone for mortar. I think we actually have limestone pieces back at the back at the oasis. Let's go find out. Right. Hey, more breadfruit. We're swimming in food. As if we weren't already. Alright, uh, mortar was in here at one point, but we are clearly out. Uh, is there any left in here? Salt peter, crushed alum, a little bit of lime, not enough to worry about. Um, we do have, oh, we have lots of lime over at the other place. Actually, I think we were crushing that lime to make mortar, weren't we? That would make sense. So we just need the sand and a bucket or a barrel. Did I leave any sand over here? It's all back at the other place. I have a snad. Here we go. I got plenty of snad. Alright. Ow, my ankles. Blue pastas uses expanded booze just for grinding your berries. Hey, we got wind again. Let's do some more of these. Just kidding. Just kidding. Uh, where was I? I was here for... This. Yeah. Unfortunately, we need to bake it. Do you know, someone mentioned that you can do um, the baking of flint into the calcified flint in a bloomery? Anybody know if you can do that with quicklime too? Like, can you just like throw some lime in a bloomery and get quicklime out? Where will I get appropriate fuel for baking? Well, I had... I had, oh wait, in here. We got Pete. My good buddy Pete. You still doing here? Yes, okay. Yeah, excuse me, excuse me. There we go. Uh, boy, we're running out of room here. Nope. Go there. Now, this should be pretty quick because we do have the better fire pit mod on. What button combo is to send the whole stack to your inventory without dragging it over? Uh, that would be the, uh, should be shift. Or should be whatever your sprint key is. Or is it shift? Shift or crouch plus click. There we go. And I might have put the rest of the lime up here. No, this is the rot bin. Where does the lime belong? Probably in the minerals bin. It is too full to hold it. Okay. Alright, Kurzar, you got me this time. Ya got me this time, buddy. Um, let's put it in. Your overflow. Sure. Definitely treasure. I will treasure this forever. Perfect. Speaking of round up things. Now, I want to make some more Band-Aids. And we luckily have a ton of honey. Or a hun of tunny. So let's see, is it the same as it was before or something like this and like that? Yeah. Let's do... A little bit more. Perfect. Boop. And the rest is a snack. Mm-mm, half liter of honey. Good, that's going very quickly. So quickly. So quickly. Bloemery lime isn't currently implemented. Okay, thanks for answering that, Elite Harbor. Good to know. New question, does letting up your outside base help with temporal rift spawns? Um, yes, it does. So, uh, rifts can't spawn, it's within like seven or eight blocks of a lantern. Um, or a torch. A torch, I think is like four or five, or five or six blocks. Uh, the, um... The little tea lights, these guys, these get off at light level 11. I think the only block they can't spawn is the one directly above it. I'm not positive though. But they are otherwise just generally as effective at stopping spawns. Alright, let's go pop. Do that. Uh... There we go. I totally put it away. I didn't just waste it. I would never do that. Okay. The trap door between those ladders is driving the perfectionists in you nuts. Which one? These guy, this one here? Or is it this one here? That's the door to keep things from the basement from getting to us. Plus, you have to have it, otherwise it doesn't count as a cellar. It's a good thing that won't take very long. But I think, let's see. This is gonna take most, if not all, this fuel. There we go. We are out. Oh, we have more Pete. Sweet. Uh, let's see, how many do you have? 16. 16, that will probably be enough. I don't know. I think we need to stay here for it to actually burn, don't we? To cook. Which is a darn shame. I wanted to go and work on the temple right now. If I had a brain, I'd have brought the stuff with me. Here's overflow, temporal stuff. I would love to get some Jonas parts going on here soon. Or Jonas things. Alright. Looks like a sideways ladder window is open. Yeah, I can see that. If I leave the chunk, it won't progress, so no. Yeah, okay. Well, this is a shame. I do, I actually did see I have one of these to sell to our resident merchant, so we can make a few bucks here. Which one of you was it? Wasn't you? You could buy some leather from me. Not very great price, honestly. Yeah. I still think that bread is the way to go for these guys. Farad. Here we go. Oh, excuse you, I'm talking to you, dude. Here we go. Eight gears, not too bad. Cha-ching! Oh, and you have tapestries and stuff. Nightfall, the morning. Oh, and storage vessels. Oh, wow. What? Wait a second. The surgeon. That is gorgeous. How much are you? 13 gears. Hold that thought. Hold that thought. You're far. I wish the other guy, is it you? Okay, you're just commodities, okay? I think we need a new, uh, a new gorgeous looking vessel. And we just made eight gears. May as well spend five more on top of that. Was 13, right? I'm just gonna bring the whole stack with me. Why not? Yeah, that croissant is really nice looking. Is that vanilla? Like, I'm not seeing a, a mod listed under it. So I'm guessing it's vanilla. Oh, man. That is nice. Oh, man, let me just quit this down. Look at it. I need like a hundred of these for the, uh, for the temple. Where am I gonna put this thing? Put it down over here. Like, oh, there. Oh, yes, that is beautiful. Wow. 1.20 quietly added a few things like that. Okay. Lethal Night Wolf loves the, uh, the blue one called cornflower. Oh, I gotta look this up now. Corn flower. Ooh. That's nice too, yeah. I'll have to keep an eye out for that. Hey there, Benny Livshits. As for me, the best way to get gears, I just read that name out loud. As for me, the best way to get gears is to sell bronze tools. Yeah, that bronze can be pretty good. The side looks kind of like a face. Uh, I can kind of see it. Really cool stuff. Oh, we have more lime here. Alright. One of the villagers in Medea sells that too. Alright. Do we have enough to make some slaked lime? I think we do. I mean, what, 16? Is it 16 to make slaked lime? Uh, that's unpause. That can go. Wait, dying gray ice, slaked lime. Ew, we want... Okay, we want a full stack. And it'll take 16 liters of water to make. Okay. Okay, I see how it is. For mortar, it's one to one. Okay. So we do want to wait for this to finish. Hey there, Bri Guy. Welcome to the stream and the chat. But while we're here, we could at least feed the chickens. And maybe see if any of them need to be petted with a knife. Uh, where's my food? Food's downstairs. Oh, it's only fresh for 10.6 years? Darn. You bought all the paintings you could from the village. Nice. Given how many there are, I think we're waiting for them to actually produce. Yeah, these are all gen fives, so. No knife petting today. No, don't eat it. Put it, put it in the thing. Excuse you. Alright. There we are. Okay. How are these faring now? We'll need a few more to go. Alright. And that will give us 512 mortar. Still gonna need a lot more in the long run. I think previously, when, when, right before Kurzum was born, I was like, we need to spend some time just making several stacks of mortar. I think that was the plan. Of course, my rope is gone. But dude, do you have to break every rope? Goodness. Uh, yeah, the plan was to have like a, a, uh, chores stream where I just make mortar for like an hour. Uh, so we have the brown coal, we have the heben tight. So we're, we're good on coal and iron. Iron. We have some cuber nickel too. Neat. I don't recall why we have all this copper. Is that so we can make more nails and strips? I can just, I can just cast those. Why do I have all this copper? I have no idea what I made it for. No idea whatsoever. I do know, we could probably, oh, you know what we could do? Um, I think next time, since it's almost noon here, we've got an hour left, I think next time, I want to go hit these gold deposits and possibly, which reminds me, so we got three known gold deposits. There's gold over by Tobias's place. And we have the thingamabob that would let us do, make a translocator back to him. Where did I put the thingamabob? There it is. The Illuminal Divergence manifold. Yes, yes, Illuminal Divergence manifold. Uh, what do I do with here? Right, I have, there's a, there's a schematic here, isn't there? Yes. Here we go. Uh, okay. Does it require any nails and strips? Yes, in nails and strips. Wait. It requires iron or better nails and strips. Just blinking through those. Also requires temporal gears, and we're kind of getting low on those. The rickety TL is more useful than expected, but you dislike the cooldown. What's the, how long is the cooldown on it? Oh wow, we need bars for everything now, or rods. Hmm. Okay. We only have five temporal gears left, so I think we're gonna find out. Next temp storm. Five days. I think, okay, next, so next stream, next stream. Uh, we're gonna dig ourselves a, a, uh... Drifter pit. Over here, over here somewhere. Um, not sure where yet. Uh, we need to harvest, we need to harvest temporal gears badly. He's not done yet. Oh, they are. Wasting fuel. How dare I? So temporal storm, get some gold, because we'll need gold for the electron plating. Um, and, uh, yeah, because as I have discovered and been told, mostly told first, then discovered, uh, temporal storms are not gonna be fun to run around in anymore, uh, which is, which is a shame, honestly. I feel like the game's kind of pigeonholing you into, or I guess forcing you into, uh, doing temporal storms the boring way. Uh, where is, here you are. 10. Oh, that mod is hilarious. Okay, so slaked lime. In go you, and a boatload of mortar. So we only needed the one stack of sand. Okay. Good to know. I will forget by next time we make this. Absolutely. So the number of hours... I guess you don't remember the number of hours that the, the Tobias translocator takes to cool down. Okay. But longer than expected. I'd be okay with like a day. I don't know. Half a day to a day, I'd be okay with. Um, longer than that, and you've kind of lost me. Put them in. There we go. Alright, we got our mortar, got everything else. Let's go. Bring blocks and make columns to kite around in. Oh, you mean for the, for the, um, for the temporal storm epic? Uh, that might not work. Um, so the, the shivers, I think are, are the shivers two blocks wide? Um, if the shivers are two blocks wide, that could be doable. And then, and then have the, um, uh, the boat horn would, you know, maybe block their attacks with the, uh... With the, the, the columns. 74, man. Right. Hamar. Not the right chisel. Not the right chisel. I need the wedge chisel. The wedgie is right. King Blaze, your house caught fire trying to light a lamp. Well, have you looked at your name lately? That's probably why. Even GG Beyond gave up doing the run and gun style. That's telling. That's very telling, because he was like insistent that his run and gun was like the best way to handle them, so. If even he can't handle it, then yeah, I'm probably just gonna make a drifter pit. Probably meaning definitely. Although frankly, I'm kind of concerned if, uh, let's see, we're gonna be playing for another hour. That's another day and a half. So we'll have to pretty much start on the drifter pit like as soon as the next stream starts. Are leaves chiseled? No? QP Tech has a nice temporal storm pit. Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't really know the current meta for, uh, for storm pits. Last time I made one was when drifters were, you know, the only game in town. Did you be on Rage Quit? We're guessing about the pine leaves. There, there are no, oh, these trees? These are not chiselled, these are, uh, Mediterranean cypress. Let's make a few of these, just to clean the floor up a little bit. It's a great sound, though. I do love it. Yeah, I think, uh, this mortar isn't gonna take us very far. Oh my goodness. Did they change how many, uh, bricks you get for use of the wedge chisel or something? This seems like a lot more than I'm used to getting out of one of these stone slabs. You can't wait for a right-click to place in crafting grid. You can right-click to place, but only one at a time. New update docked twenty minutes ago. Alright, well, thanks, uh, Louis Velasquez, Velasquez. Vino lol. Hey, Vino lol. Good to see you again. You still bed rot? Uh-oh, you sleeping in today? Alright, so we got thirty-two. Oh, wow. Forty-eight. So it's still eight per use, I guess. Just seemed like a lot more than last time. It mentions a lot of things about 1.21 in the new update, cool. Well, I guess next stream will be on 1.20.12, or do you mean like an update isn't just like a news update? Alright. I'm gonna hang on to these last bricks here to use for other shapes if we need them. I think we don't have, you only have forty-two spares right now. And then we got the mortar, pop you in there. Alright, let's go see what kind of damage we can do over here. Uh, how do I get up there? Do I have any ladders? I don't. Let's put some down then. Alright, so we're gonna go like this, I think. Oh. So 1.21 is gonna be sooner than expected, okay. You taller than what I want? Yes, you are, by quite a lot. Let's go to like here and break that. Perfect. Ah, we got to the ceiling in here too, ah, it's rough. That is rough, we're gonna need some dirt. And I think the same can be said for over here. Hmm. I was hoping this wouldn't just be a resource gathering day today, but apparently there's no getting around it, we need resources. And therefore we must gather. Alright. What's that going to be? Blue pasta? You asking me or you asking chat? This is going to be the temple. This is the, this is the ceiling, or it will be the ceiling. And we'll have a path similar to over here. And as I recall, I've been, I had been talking about, uh, starting around here and making a staircase up to meet the level of this eventually. The food, oh, I'm running on food, oh no, guys. You guys just hate to hear me starve, huh? Eat or I'll starve, oh no. Whatever will I do? Alright, so, uh, we need dirt, do I have dirt? Hydration check, alright. I can move and drink at the same time, I think. Okay, awkward running while hydrating, done. Now, dirt. 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 Nope. Okay, well. Uh, sandstone, oh my goodness, I love sandstone stones. Gravel, sand, we, we only have like thirty-two dirt back at the base, so. Look what you guys made me do. I'll stick it up here, oops. Where is the nearest hill I can knock down for dirt? Southish. I kinda don't wanna wreck the landscape here, though. If we just go across there, let's go across the bay. We're gonna go down by the bay. Where the watermelons grow. Oh no, guys, I did it. I started it, it's stuck in your heads now. Let's put the chisel away, and the hammer. Is that natural world generation? Um, mostly, so I do have a mod on called Vanilla Plus that kinda just smooths out the vanilla world gen. Um, so you, like, it's, it would look mostly like this, but it would be spikier. And yes, I'm swimming, because I don't have a raft here yet. What geographic features do you usually take into account when deciding to build a place to build your base? Um, it depends on what I'm building. It's, it's dependent on like the actual build itself. So this time I wanted something big and flat, because I'm building a giant temple. Uh, so, big old desert. I didn't really have any particular desire to have it on water, but the opportunity presented itself, so I went for it. Um, the first guide season, I wanted some place on a, like a ridge. The ridge I found for the first guide season wasn't as tall as I might have originally liked, but it ended up working out really well. Um, hobbit. The hobbit season, season two, was kinda the same as this one, where I wanted like a flat space. I actually wanted a dell, not the computer kind, but the, you know, like a divot in the ground. Um, and so I was able to find that, uh, pretty easily too, which was really nice. Although I guess in sort of the new meta is that you're gonna wanna have some water, so you can sort of surround yourself with water and somewhat minimize enemy spawns. Alright. Oh, meteorite. Look at that. I've already found that one. Duh. It's gonna be from hyenas. A little bit. Alright. Oh. Oh dear. What was down here? And did I dig this out? Probably another. It's probably a meteorite. Looking at the shape, probably a meteorite. Alright, and I kind of want, I guess I don't really care what kind of soil we use, because there's, you know, infinite dirt in the world. Just gonna start from the top. But let's get, I don't know. Let's get a few stacks of dirt, and then let's go get some actual work done on the temple. I'm having a bit of a solston day here of like, I wanna do this thing. And then not being able to do it, because we don't have the materials needed. And the reason we need dirt for the build is that we need to fill in all the spaces kinda in between, um, the layers of stone, so that we don't waste all of our bricks trying to fill it in, and to prevent uh, short drifters, the crawlers, from spawning in there in the dark. Cora, what are your thoughts, this is from Folger, what are your thoughts on doing an Aztec step to pyramid complex build for the next base in the new guide series, in Base in Jungle? Uh, next guide series is already, I already have my, my heart set on a particular build style. Um, it's not Aztec, uh, it is not South American or Latin American at all, actually. Um, and actually this, so this guide series, or not this guide, this Desert Life series was originally going to possibly be Aztec themed. Um, when I first thought about it. And that was before I, I had the full vision for the, uh, the temple in my head, well, two temple options, and you guys voted for the one. Um, I, I never ended up, uh, really wanting to do an Aztec temple, because in my other block game world that won't be mentioned here, um, I did do a very, not Aztec temple, but a very, uh, square temple. So vaguely Aztec in nature, and I wanted to get, you know, sort of not do that this time around. Uh, but an Aztec jungle thing could be kinda fun to do. That could be something for, um, if we, if we end up moving base at some point, like going south, uh, then we, that could be a cool idea. Um, but what I'm kinda thinking of doing for the third guide series is possibly starting out in a warmer location, because I want to build really high on a mountain. Doesn't need to be a super high one, like, doesn't need to be like that high. But like, up there would be nice, at that sort of elevation. Um, and I think being, like, starting out in a, in a temperate area isn't really ideal for that, uh, for altitude cold reasons. It would be really, really cold really early. Uh, farms would die off, really in like August. Um, so what I was thinking of doing was, starting in the south, and then living on a mountain, um, that gets winter into winter, so like, it acts like you're temperate. Um, but then you go down the mountain and it's warm. Um, that way we could have easier access to some of the things that I wanna cover in the guide series. Uh, like getting, being able to access breadfruit and so on, without spending literally three hours of my time on a journey. Hey there, Shruggi Moji. Can you answer the silly question, how do you get grains for your chickens? You've been growing rice spelt. Rice. But when you harvest it, drop seeds and wet grains only. Um, Shruggi Moji, you have a mod on this doing that, I don't know what mod it is, though. Um, if someone else has experience with that, um, then might be able to answer you, but the wet grains thing is not vanilla, so I can't really help you with that. Hey there, Paladin Joe, you like the mountain? This would be a kinda cool mountain. I want a big flat area to build on, though, I don't wanna have like a lot of mountain behind the build. I wanna be able to see it from like, you know, miles away. Little Polly Cat's been moved onto the subtropics. Need to move your farms up. Yep, I'm actually planning on doing a little video about that, like a little, uh, short about farming while high. As I wanna call it. Yeah, I'm trying to do like, like, one, one short a week to put out like Fridays. Just for fun, funsies. And also to kinda keep some of the, some of the guide-ish stuff still on the channel while I'm doing this season, this series. Yeah, one of the nice things is that if you, if you move to the south, and this is actually less, this is less of an issue if you start to game this out, like we did. Uh, but if you move to the south, then you can end up with year-round growing. Um, you just go like halfway up the mountain, maybe like, I don't know, fifty blocks up. And you have perfect weather year-round for farming temperate crops, or temperate through survival crops. Alright, how much do we have there? Eh, let's do one more double row. Ow, get, get out of here. Get. And one more. That's right. All of you. Oops. That's right. I'm gonna tick your yummy guts. Well, everyone, that's going to about do it for this episode of Vintage Story Desert Life. I hope you enjoyed the video. If you did, let me know by leaving a like or a comment in the section below. But for now, as always, my name is Hazm Karazar. Thank y'all for watching, and I'll see you in the next one.